All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. It's Commissioners check-in, Monday, February 12th, 2024. It's 2:04 PM. News time answer, Chair of the Board, Commissioner, our Vice Chair will be with us in a few moments. We have Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Klaus in the boardroom. Commissioner Mejia zooming in from her work in Washington DC for Oneko. And interim County Manager, Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, Rob Gelder. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have two and a half hours if we need it, might not, but we have three pending decisions to address. The first one is CPA 16, Community Driven Review of Agricultural Code Update. See Ashley Arry from Community Planning and Economic Development is here. Do I want to call, do I want to call Ashley up, County Manager? Come on up. And we'll just jump right into this topic.
Yep. So Commissioners, you had a work session on this item, I think last Monday. And I'm going to turn it over to Ashley to outline what your options are and see where you want to go.
Hi, thank you. It's kind of a nice opportunity to come back just a week later with some optional changes based on the briefing that we held last week. So just a quick overview for those watching. This is the Agricultural Code Update component of CPA 16, Community Driven Review of Ag Policies and Programs. The maps will be considered at a later date, probably later this spring, early summer, as our new geotechnical person has got up to speed. So a hearing was held January 16th, 2024. We did hear from, from the public on a few items. And then, of course, there were questions from the Commissioners. In response to those questions, and they really dived into the details of different sections of the code. I did put together a little table on page two of the briefing presentation form that just outlines what the optional changes could be that the Board could consider if they choose to move forward with adoption of this code. If it's okay with you, we can go through this table and then we, I'm happy to address any additional questions or ideas you have.
Can I ask you a question? So I've reviewed this and it looks like you've addressed everything. Is there anything you weren't able to address?
No.
Okay, well then this shouldn't take too long.
I told you it would be easy.
Just wondered.
Yeah, unless there's other questions or concerns. This, the, at least my, my interpretation of what I heard is reflected in this list. So the first one was farm stand size and increasing the farm stand size to the allowable square footage that's exempt from building code regulations. And so that got updated in a few sections, both in the long-term ag zoning as well as the agricultural tourism chapter. And all those sections are referenced over there on the right. Hello. Just talking about farm stand size, Commissioner. That next one was maximum building height exemptions. And this was that question around, like exemptions do exist for agricultural buildings, but it's hard to track where that exists in the code. And so this is just a new reference. Specifically, when you look at the long-term ag zoning and it speaks to building height, this will point you to where those exemptions are elsewhere in the code. And there is a specific reference to agricultural structures.
We've got more of a clarification?
Just a clarification. So no change in what's allowable. It's just kind of a nice roadmap for someone trying to figure out, hey, you know, is it 35 feet for a barn or can I go higher than that?
Okay, I got it. Thank you. I wasn't sure about that one.
The rural theme, this was a question from Commissioner Edwards about, you know, is there a definition of rural theme? It's referenced in here. There is no definition of rural theme that could be open to the Board if they want to develop one. I opted to remove the reference to rural theme. The code still stands on its own. That is a subjective term. And I think, I think the, the code will do fine without reference to that. And I think there were two references.
And just to flesh that out, I think Commissioner Edwards already asked this, but I forget the answer. So if, if somebody built something and their neighbor thought it was not in rural, like it looks like a spaceship and it's their, you know, they're part of some religious cult or something. I don't know. And the neighbor says, that's not rural theme. We want to challenge this. We want this repealed. Or what, what do they do? I mean, who, who decides? Who enforces it? What happens if somebody builds inconsistent with the rural theme, assuming we kept it in there?
That, that would be a question I'd have to ask our code compliance section. I'm not sure if they've gotten complaints, you know, specifically related to rural theme.
But like when they, like, let's say they then presented an application for a building that wasn't into the rural theme. So it could be maybe staff could say that's inconsistent with our code.
It's discretionary and there's no definition for it and there's no specific standards for it. So I, you know, to the extent that you want to create clearer and more consistent code, removing it would definitely be clear.
You'd have spaceship to get there.
Well, you know, trying to think about things that might fall under that category.
I think words like that make people feel good. You know, I, I don't, I don't, it's not descriptive and it's not like, you know, a lawyer might not like it. But words like that.
Lawyers would like it. Let's go to court.
Yeah, it's, it's something that makes people feel good when they read, oh yeah, yeah. We definitely want a rural theme.
Yeah, and rural character is referenced in other parts of the code because it is something that is baked into state law in terms of how we manage land use, manage land uses in the county. But this is a little bit different, that rural character. So when you go and try to find references, it's a little bit harder.
Themes usually go with some type of design criteria. And if you haven't developed all of that, it probably is problematic to keep it in there without providing some distinct definition and standards to meet. And as long as the character remains under the GMA and within our comp plan, we're probably okay.
So the next one is this agritourism event timing. Would you?
Page two of the brief, right there, that, that chart.
Yeah, that little chart there. So this was a concern that if, if the feedback we got from the agritourism committee and the ag advisor committee is that it would be really nice if events could be held on back-to-back weekends during the event season. And that currently it's a 10-day notice. We had proposed reducing it to seven days, but that really doesn't provide as much flexibility as reducing it to five days. And the five days nicely aligns with the noticing requirement to surrounding property owners for those larger events. So you've got five days in between events and five day noticing with that optional change.
I appreciate that change.
The next one is country inns. Oh, sorry about that. And country inns has had a number of design standards and access standards that got carried over from the original agritourism code based on feedback last week, looking at removing some of those access and citing standards. More specifically, there were ones that, you know, it couldn't be accessed off of a gravel road. It had to be a paved road. There had to be a minimum distance, like as the crow flies between one country inn and another country inn or neighborhood convenience store. So basically just looking at a country inn as it stands on its own without a relationship to where another country inn is or a neighborhood convenience shopping center.
I don't even understand that one, so I'm all for it. I mean, I don't understand the air mile and arterial, so.
You wouldn't be able to have one if you go to my horse or hiking trail or.
Nope, you would. I mean, the, the way it's written, it's only a paved road access from an art dealer or collector. And so the proposed change would be removing those. There's still a number of other requirements associated with a country inn. It's just those specific ones. So you could have a gravel road or horse trail. Or I know that's popular in New Zealand and England.
They got those hobbit towns. Those are cool.
Hey, I would love. Sure.
Tolkien themed.
Tolkien themed. We could, you could probably write standards for that.
The Shire's got to be rural.
This next one is the agricultural home stay size allowance. And this is also just a clarification. There, there's already a limitation to how big each one of these little home stay kind of units would be, but eliminating that overall square footage requirement. So you don't have this weird cap of 2,400, even though elsewhere it says you can have these individual 600 square foot units.
So if I may, what would be the cap? I mean, because if you remove the overall square footage and you still have an allowed, so what's the number?
Thirty-six hundred, because only six are allowed. So there's still a, a cap on the number of units, which then creates its own square footage cap instead of some other cap that's just put in there.
So you could have a master location and sub-locations.
Lovehouse.
Okay, sounds cool. Okay, I can understand that, you know.
And then the code reference, this is just a general, trying to simplify references when you're talking about all the other codes that would apply. So we basically, now it just says all, all of these other codes will apply instead of going through all the individual codes because we might miss one or two. So, so that's really just, I've found two sections where that seemed to fit nicely. Where you could just simplify that.
Good. Can we go back to the event timing?
Yeah.
Piece that you mentioned that it was the days between events, but also the notice time. So you're shortening the amount of notice for neighbors as well as the number of days between events.
So the day, so the five-day notice exists already. And so it would be aligning essentially, I guess, the five-day in-between with that five-day notice.
I got confused when you said.
Sorry.
No, that's right.
Okay, so that's that. And then there were, there's other pieces of this. Obviously, this was kind of something we jumped into while we were reviewing public comment. So the Commissioners have any questions or concerns about the other pieces of the code update? Besides the, the new stuff that we got into about agritourism?
I really like the updates. But I, I think somebody asked about like, how, yeah, how is this enforced? Because there's, you know, there's one place in particular that I've already gotten some, some phone calls about in the past that had some issues where, you know, they were landing helicopters and they were, you know, getting a little noisier than the neighbors like. And now there was an Olympian article saying that they're, I don't know, they applied for something new or they'll be able to do more things when these code changes happen. How do we, you know, like, how do we separate, like, somebody that, you know, like, I'm, I'm, you know, like, I'm concerned that there's this group that is, you know, maybe they've taken too many liberties in the past and now there's going to be constituents that are worried that now they're going to be, now that they're given more liberties, that's going to start happening again, which is separate from, you know, all of these great issues that can benefit a lot of, you know, entrepreneurs in the rural communities. And I don't want those two things getting, you know, muddied. So how do we talk to the constituents about that separate place? And ensure them that, you know, things aren't going to go crazy again?
I'd be happy to chat with the, the code compliance folks. The, the updates in particular to the agritourism overlay. In addition to, you know, getting stakeholder feedback, worked on it with prosecuting attorney's office in light of the fact that we had, you know, a handful of compliance, compliance cases. And so really trying to make it as clear and objective as possible to eliminate some, some of, some of that confusion. So I, these items here, really only the, that is the list of like additional allowances, I would say. I mean, changing like event timing is one of the biggest ones, one of the biggest changes to the agritourism code.
So what happens when somebody has an event every night or every?
There's still a permit pathway, correct?
Yeah.
So the.
What happens is they don't get the permits.
It goes through our code compliance staff.
Well, isn't that happening on Skookum Chuck Road right now?
Yeah, this is really nothing to do with the issue of how we can fund and.
Okay.
Compliance.
Yeah, it's not.
These are just the rules of what we can, can enforce on.
If we can.
If.
Now we need to ask.
Now we need to ask the question about how do we actually enforce.
Yeah. Can we do that? That conversation we've been set up? Perhaps.
It's resources, isn't it?
Every budget season, an opportunity to have that conversation again. In terms of resources for.
I mean, the same thing with meth labs and junkyards.
I mean, honestly, maybe what, what, what you're talking about though is like, I've never really heard it from anywhere lower than Josh, you know, kind of like, I mean, it would be good to have our code compliance supervisor here to talk about, here's the, here's how many we get. And here's like, you know how with police, like.
Reality.
Yeah, the reality is like, sometimes like, if they can, if it's, if, if, if they can respond to every complaint, it's just a matter of they're not only going to respond if there's a complaint, well, that's one thing. If they're getting lots of, even, even at a purely complaint-driven level, they're not responding to half of them, then we need to know that, right? Like, it's like when police say that, like, or when you hear from the community that, like, if they call in, like, someone stole something from their property in Rochester and they just say, go online and file a report. We're not going to come investigate that.
Why?
Yeah, I mean, just knowing the reality on the ground so that we can make the budget decision that's the right one, I think, would be good to hear, like, because I don't have a good sense of, you know, do they have cutoffs and stuff they just won't respond to because it's just they're overwhelmed with other complaints? Or do they hit every complaint?
I'm not totally a fan of complaint-driven code enforcement.
That's what I'm saying, but like.
I prefer proactive and then it's, I don't like neighbors snitching on neighbors. I would prefer us going out and taking care of the most egregious situations so that you don't have people looking through their curtains and spying on each other and.
As a general rule, the same way in the sheriff's office, they get a zillion complaints about speeding, for example, on a country road or whatever it is, they just can't do it all. I mean, and if they do it, they go by there once in a week. Well, what does that solve? You know, it, it's, it gives you some visual that something's happening.
Code enforcement issue can't run. Code enforcement issue can't run away from you, though.
Oh, well, yeah.
Chase that one down.
But we don't have the resources. We've never had the resources to deal with.
Well, it's like, you know, there's ones that are like fixed versus like fleeting in time, you know, like if you set up your farm stand and it's too big, well, you know, maybe it takes them three months to get out there, but they can go out and see if the farm stand's too big. But if it's like an event that was done, you know, three days apart and, you know, by the time you get out there, it's over. Like, the harm's been done.
It's snowy.
Whatever harm it is, it's over and you can't.
Yeah.
You can't prove it or you can't really do anything about to fix it, you know, and.
Well, we had that one over on Kaiser Road and that went through many sheriffs because I was involved when I was part, part of it my time. It took twenty years to deal. That went through the prosecutor's office, the courts, many, many different appearances.
Like Rainbow Valley.
Well, Rainbow Valley was one of them. It was just an ongoing nightmare.
You dealt with it as a code enforcement issue eventually, didn't you?
Yeah. I mean, so it's kind of, the entity in charge of it ends up having to decide what the priority is, you know. And actually, the squeaky wheel gets the grease is what defines what is a priority.
Yeah. We finally got LP Brown taking care of it.
Yeah, the same kind of a thing. Kids gathering there. Clearwood, same thing up, not Clearwood, the next one up. Singletree, took years to get them.
And a lot of times it's a multidisciplinary approach you have to take. It's environmental health.
But we have so many, there are so many that come in, there's no way they can check them on.
Sorry, Ashley, there's enough.
I just, I, I'm not Josh, and so I can't necessarily speak to the code enforcement pieces as well as he would be able to. And so I'm, I'm taking notes to relay them.
Well, I'd say it'd be a great Monday afternoon presentation on one of our agendas to just kind of be able to, there's one of our guys right there, to be able to pick the brain of our code compliance folks at whatever level Jeff, me and Josh wants to, you know, bring in staff. But just to hear kind of on the ground, like, how many do they get and how many do they have to turn away and, you know, where, what could they do with one more person? What could they do, you know, like, kind of just have a feel for it.
Doesn't have to be a Monday afternoon. We could slot it in.
Okay, Commissioner McHian, go ahead.
Um, I'm in agreement with having a briefing later on about this, but when we think about code compliance, it's not just community planning and economic development. You also have to think about public works as well as public health. So bringing.
A law enforcement aspect to it as well.
I mean, bringing them into the process, I think, would give us a more holistic understanding.
Yeah, and maybe there's a type of, maybe there's a type of transgression that we're more interested in, you know, focusing on because it has a bigger impact. And we just limit it to that so that we can, you know, obviously, like Commissioner Edward said, you're not going to be able to do everything. But is maybe there's a one thing that's causing a lot of, you know.
I've always thought that was the best approach is you pick one aspect of code enforcement and then you emphasize that for a year, you see how much you can make improvements on. And then when you're doing that little aspect of it, all of the folks involved in it get really good at the ways that you enforce that little aspect of it. Sorry, Ashley.
You know what, I'm, I'm all about breaking down silos and lining up teams accordingly.
So on the code changes, if the board is in favor of the ones that you've laid out here, in, in, in addition to the ones that were proposed, what's the next step? Do we have to put this on to a? Yeah.
I, Wayne just walked in just after Ashley asked the, answered my question. One of my first questions to Ashley was, was there anything here that we went over the other day that you weren't able to address or whatever? And she said, nope, we got it all. To me, that's pretty well, she's got it addressed.
Trying. Um, so the next up would be just putting it on normal Tuesday afternoon. So it's ready to go, you, and you're, you know, the noticing for the public hearing indicated that you could make a decision at any regularly scheduled meeting. I think I'm too late to put it in the AIS for next Tuesday without Amy's help, but next Tuesday or any Tuesday thereafter.
It just, I think the idea is, though, to get this done so that the season is coming.
Yeah. So our commissioners all in favor of putting this on a Tuesday afternoon at the next possible?
Don't say I.
I'm in favor.
I support that idea. Thank you.
I, you would support it if it came up, is that what you said?
Well, thank you. I appreciate all the thoughtful feedback and conversation.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay, next up is LTAT grant awards.
All right, we have Jenica here. This item was during a work session last week, I think it was on Wednesday. And Jenica's here to answer any questions you may have, but we are seeking approval to place this on a board's agenda.
I, I thought, didn't we kind of decide that everything had been handled the last time we were here, Jenica?
I think they'll.
No, because we.
Okay.
Sorry.
Decision's on Monday.
Commissioner McHian, go ahead.
Well, we didn't make any decisions.
Yeah, I was like, we couldn't make any decisions, so we have to do it today to agree to add it to the Tuesday agenda basis.
Fire, I guess.
No, it sounds like it's all done.
I think you're good to go.
Okay, everybody on favor of putting this on?
I'm in support.
Support.
I might support it if it showed up on an AIS or something.
Okay, that was quick, very good. Next up is county manager.
All right, so commissioners, I am pleased to share with you that I've been in conversation with Leonard Hernandez, one of your candidates for county manager, and I am seeking your approval of a, of a compensation package. And that includes a salary of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand a year. That is the top of the placement range that we published. He will have an available leave bank of one-hundred-and-twenty hours upon starting. And his leave accrual rate will begin at the twenty-six-year rate. That is the highest accrual rate that the county has, and it acknowledges his time serving in government. The package includes a moving stipend. He is moving from California to the Thurston County area of five thousand dollars for moving. And there is a hiring bonus. The hiring bonus is twenty thousand dollars. That is conditional. We will pay it when he arrives as part of his first paycheck, but it is conditioned on his completing at least one year of employment. And if he does not, we'll prorate it and he would need to return the money to the county. So that is the offer package and I am seeking your approval to put that in an offer letter and send that to Leonard.
All right, I have a question. Do you have a, some kind of contractual agreement, a separation agreement?
We did not enter into any conversations about severance packages. Should he move the county?
Isn't that kind of common? Is it, isn't that kind of a common?
Not in the county.
We didn't have that? We had that with Romero, didn't we?
No, there was, there was a.
Because we did the renewal.
Agreement with Romero that the board entered into after he was already the county manager for a few years.
Yes, yeah, I think so.
And it basically says that upon leaving, he would receive the same benefits that any other county employee would receive. And we would follow the same for Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're doing it right, that's all.
And can you speak to the, you had mentioned that part of the financial structure can be managed because of certain savings from the county man?
Oh, yes. We can afford this package, including the hiring bonus, because we have salary savings from the vacant county manager's position. So the, the office can absorb the, this cost.
It's on the higher end, but certainly reflective of his experience and, and the time he spent. It's within the range that we all talked to you about and kind of authorized you to negotiate for, so it's, it's all there as far as I'm concerned.
Was Maria satisfied in the end?
Yes, I included her on the, she was included in the conversation.
She was satisfied with the folks she had talked with?
She is.
Well, guess we're moving on.
All right, then I'll be sending him the offer letter and I'm going to hit send on an announcement to all county staff. And Megan has a press release ready to go this afternoon.
And the hiring date is?
I'm sorry, what?
April first?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Can we pick a different day than April Fool's Day?
I thought about that, but actually, it works. It works.
Okay. How about if we said the last day of March?
First thirty-first, it's a Sunday.
Well, he can do a free day that day or something.
My mom got married on April Fool's Day and it's still there.
Did it work?
It's worked. It's worked. So, it's still there.
All right, and we're moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. I want to, I want to thank Rob for putting it. Thank you, Rob.
Next up is external boards and commissions. Any reports since our last check-in last week? I have some, I had some meetings, but I don't think there's really anything to report from them myself. There was a sentencing guideline commission meeting Friday, a state building code council public hearing Friday. Nothing really, all that exciting from those two meetings.
I, I guess I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Like, hey, Rob, where are we at on the parking margins for the homeless camps and incorporated roads?
The RVs? We were, that is still in process. We've been doing a scrub of other jurisdictions as to what kind of programs they have in place. Looking, also following a bill that would have potentially made some funds available to the towing companies and/or the folks that actually do the disposal of them. Unfortunately, that didn't pass. So I did have a conversation with the sheriff a week or so ago and are looking to, I think we'll end up having to come back maybe for another briefing with the board because it will likely, if, if we want to change sort of what we do or how we handle those, it probably will have some financial impact because there really is no other resource than the county to kind of offset. There are some, but not enough for the, the volume that we see, so.
Commissioner McHian, is this on, is your question on this point?
Nope.
Okay, well, then I'll get back to you.
That's it.
You're still giving your.
No, no, I'm good. I, I'm just looking in to see if I'm missing anything. I didn't have any other things to report. Commissioner, okay, go ahead.
Uh, for commissioner items?
Sure, we're all, we're just commissioner items.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So Tether is going to pass a letter, a draft letter, and this is kind of a conversation that we had, I believe it was last week in regards to the DNR project that they have with Habitat for Humanity and the request that they have out to the legislature. So hoping that we will give a thumbs up and that way staff can send it out. The way we formatted it was just having the chair sign it just for efficiency sakes and, you know, for our staff not having to go and get all of our signatures. So I worked with, you know, Tom and Elisa as well as Keely on this letter, so they are in the loop of this, so hopefully to get your support.
Awesome. Can we trade them for a few trees for this? Uh, yeah, it sounds, looks good. McAllister have two L's, I always liked it. McAllister Geological Sensomary. I see it spelled two different ways.
Okay, I think it's got two L's.
Zoning for site for McAllister and then the project for the McAllister Springs is two separate ways, so.
Yep.
Who is responsible for this letter?
Taylor, you got this?
No, she left.
She left the room.
She dropped, she dropped these copies and bailed.
Uh, she, um, okay, well.
We'll make sure she gets the edits, Commissioner.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioner items or can you replace?
Yeah. Where are we at on hiring of upfront staff as far as replacement staff?
So we are only down one. There's only one missing and that is the executive aide to the county manager. And I am reluctant to attempt to fill that. I think he should be able to hire his own.
Hundred percent.
What about the, what about Carly's position?
Central services.
That is, that is a central services position. That is not a commissioner's office front office staff.
It's currently posted.
And I have a list of candidates to review and I'll interview for that when I get back.
So we're not necessarily shy of something going on?
You're down one.
Okay.
Sounds nice.
And that would only be for that position for the county manager, that it sounds like?
That's the only one that's vacant at this time. And I have checked with HR. I doubt that Mr. Hernandez has someone in mind here in Thurston County. He'll, he will be able to use the pool, the application pool that I have for my assistance and it's a same level if he should want to do that or he can recruit on his own. But we could speed it up by him using the existing pool.
When we say that, I, I too think that he ought to be able to do his own thing, so to speak. But, boy, I'd like to make sure somebody that knows the operation of the county someone.
But, I mean, I would expect him to appreciate something like that in applicant and be able to discern that on his own, as my, I would expect. And also, if he makes a horrible decision, that's something that I can judge him by.
Wanted to, wanted to leave that for him. Get to, start to build his own team.
Commissioner, anything else?
I have items, but I was waiting for.
Oh, no. Go ahead.
You always have lots of fun stuff to share with. Are you waiting to go last?
I, I have only one thing and I'm think, I'm debating whether to even bring it up at this particular.
Now, we got to know.
So.
Can't do that to us. I met with Sierra, some folks was from Sierra Pacific. You know, they came in, they just wanted to kind of talk about their operation. They wanted, of course, to talk about how, you know, foresting in Thurston County affects their business and also, you know, kind of their practices and, and the different mills and how many folks that they employ. And that, they, they have a good story. I, I would recommend meeting with them for anybody that is interested or is, is approached by them. And then the, when you, when you visit the mills, and I've, I've visited a few over the years, it's really impressive the, the way that the resources are used in a way that there's no waste. Like, I, you know, so it, you know, it, it is what it is, it's forestry, but like, really understanding or trying to understand how every product we touch comes from that industry. And there's a lot of ways, I had no idea, you know, and so like the, the way chemicals are produced and things like that, and there's a lot of renewable, like textiles and things like that that come from the forest industry that you wouldn't think about. I believe much better than plastics and things like that. So I did, I did recommend that they hit you up, you know, because it, it was, it was a good talk, it was interesting.
So we would just be more generally knowledgeable?
Yeah, they just wanted to say, hey, you know, if you want, want to know anything about the forest industry or the mills that are operating still or where, you know, where? or where, you know, where we source our materials and, you know, how we make sure that things are taken care of in responsible ways. And they, they view themselves as being on the, the front line of, uh, you know, environmental practices and, you know, just, they're, they're, you know, they talk about how, uh, DNR's forest practices, uh, unit is the most hardcore in the world and they are very protective of everything, so they've got their perspective. And, uh, it's always worth hearing from everybody, so, I mean, I'll just, I'll just leave that at that.
Just for the record, I mean, I, no problem with that. I did serve for two years on the Timber Counties Caucus through WAC and
Yeah.
I was always hearing, they, they're very balanced in bringing both sides and
Excellent.
I've heard multiple presentations on all the, all those topics that you've, that you've gone through and, so, yeah, I mean, I totally understand, um, the, we're, we're, we're ahead of the curve in Washington compared to a lot of places.
Yeah.
But we kind of have to be because we have one of the most important forests.
Yeah.
You know, um, in the whole planet.
I went out to their summer event out of Vail that they had, uh, a big logging show out there that they were at.
When I first joined the Timber Counties Caucus, they had just put together like this three-day Timber 101 presentation, which was awesome.
Oh, wow.
And I, and I was new to that caucus and they took us out in the field, we went out with the DNR people, I got ridiculed by Mr. Pettit cause I had a picture with my hard hat on, uh, on my Facebook page, um, so.
It's a good education.
But it was a really good education, um, worth the ridicule to learn about forestry practices and what, you know, all the different things DNR does when they do cuts and stuff, so, yeah.
I met with, uh, Peter from Marilyn Strickland's office as well as Daniel from Senator Murray's office. We talked about kind of hot topics for Thurston County, in particular, South Thurston County. Uh, we talked about the UGA visions, uh, in, in the Grand Mound area and our, our needs for that area. We talked about how we're searching out, uh, planning money, we talked about, uh, kind of our, our desire to look for a raise grant, but now it's kind of apparent that that's not a tool that we really need. Um, so they were really interested in, in that, the development of that concept and how they can assist in that. We talked about beef production or, well, we talked about meat processing and ag.
Any headway on that?
Uh, what's that?
Any headway on that?
Uh, they said that they would support, uh, a, an earmark for it, either one of them. Uh, Senator Murray's office was, was very adamant that, he was like, give us, give us all the requests you want, go up to five million dollars, just throw.
Let's send, let's send a letter tomorrow.
Yeah, well, they haven't opened yet, so when they open, you know, that, that was something that he said, please send our way. And he said that the Senator Murray's office has a, a lot of pull in, in that respect, so, Carolina?
Thank you, I was just gonna kind of also update, um, that in, uh, conversations, um, they said that, um, gee, what was I gonna say, sorry, I lost my track of mine, um, with the earmark, it would be best coming from the EDC because I believe we can, as a county, we can only submit two earmarks, is that correct, Robin?
Yeah, yes.
And so I think we have our two earmarks set, so, um, I, I've been asking and working with our lobbyists as well as with congressional staff and asking them, right, if the EDC were to submit this, right, and have like our full support on this. Is it something that would still be a viable application for an earmark? And kind of what they told you, Commissioner Fournier, they've also said yes, but kind of trying to switch that avenue so like we can submit our two earmarks and then, but then also have this avenue as well.
So we need to set up a meeting with like Michael and Aslan to talk about the EDC side of it.
Or get them to write a letter.
No, we'd be asking them to.
And, um, I've been.
Excellent, yeah.
Yes, and I've been in contact with them and, um, I'm working to set up a meeting with, uh, Jenica as well as, um, the Colton Ranch, the EDCs, as well as yourself, uh, and then, um, and our lobbyists and kind of, kind of walking us, like, you know, walking through this and what it is.
Awesome. Uh, I had a meeting with Debbie to talk about the DEI stuff and, and her efforts and, you know, she was, you know, of course telling me that her, her, uh, main difficulty is, is lack of budget and I think she's aware that that is something that she's got the opportunity to bring up. In the budget process, I, I, I was like, let me quote Robin for you. There is a budget process and she's like, oh, yeah, yeah, I know, so.
Good job.
Yes, uh, and I, I, I thought it was a good meeting with, with Rob and Brett Trowbridge. I thought it went fairly well and, you know, he, uh, we assured him that many of the things that he has, he has brought to the board, we are trying to do our best to include in the RFP process and, uh, you know, he seemed to hear that, I think. Yeah, and he seemed to hear that, we'll see, you know, we'll see, but, you know, it's, it's tough because when somebody's got, you know, they've got their gripes and they go to public comment and they get upset and they, they air their grievances, there's never any satisfaction for them, so it's hard for, I think, hard for somebody to feel listened to and validated. But that's not what that is for, uh, and then you, you have to hope that they trust that you're gonna write down stuff that they say and pull out the good bits and throw away the nonsense and move it into the process and, you know, that's not always the case, but I, I think.
I thought it went well as also, and I think part of the takeaway is that we'd be more proactive, um, in really sharing that information. Case in point, uh, amending the RFP to make sure that the McAllister Springs report is a reference document to that and then making sure that we share that RFP with them so he has it, doesn't have to go through the process of requesting it, et cetera, and that just shifts the dynamic in that relationship.
Had a tour of the Family Justice Center with Commissioner Edwards and the facility staff. Uh, yes, there's some issues there that make it very difficult to operate the facility. They've, they've got, you know, their computer system is the brain for that whole facility that, uh, allows them to switch cameras from the control center and allows them to open doors remotely from the control center. And it is, there are safety issues that, that come up, you know, I, I have a lot of concern for the fact that there is, you know, there's, you know, incarcerated youth in their cells and they have no real ability to notify the, the central control if they have an issue. So, you know, some kid gets served something with peanut butter in it for lunch and they have an anaphylactic reaction, they had, they hit a, they would typically be able to hit a button, they would call central control and notify them. Now they have no ability, they do fifteen-minute checks as a, as a matter of policy with all of the, um, I don't know if they call them officers there or, you know, the, the.
Detention officers.
Yeah, the detention officers, uh, but, you know, there's human error, there's things that happen, you know? Jeffrey Epstein had an issue while he was in one of the most highly guarded facilities in the United States. Uh, so things happen and, you know, so that, that's a concern and the exterior doors thing, we talked about that, I mean, there's windows to see out, that wasn't my biggest concern and there's some, you know, there might be some low-tech fixes that facilities could come up with, like those are these giant heavy sliding barn doors that would typically electronically open and now they have to reach way up and they've got this little device that can crank it open, that's horribly inefficient because it's all geared and the ratios are also slow turning. You know, they're coming up with a way to put a drill in there, but there, you could pull out the barn door and put a, a swinging man door that's keyed, that's secure, so that, they're looking at options, uh, that would fix that, but there's a fix there that we're gonna need to come up with sometime in the, you know, not-too-distant future, if the eBay fix doesn't get us by, that'll be horrible. Would, did you have any thoughts on that tour?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a, the whole system, it's, uh, it's cameras, speakers, lights and locks. All of them are inoperable, uh, to one degree or another. And to the point that there's like a panic, uh, button, for an example. And they're afraid to hit it because it might just unlock everything and then never work again, you know, because it quits mid, midstream.
When I, when I worked at Green Hill, you'd be watching a unit and if a fight broke out with like six, seven of the folks incarcerated, you got a riot going on, you'd have to, you'd hit a button and it would unlock every single door in that unit and you'd say, clear the floor, and they'd all, you know, the ones that weren't.
It was up to them to get off.
Yeah, the ones that weren't participating in the riot would go into the rooms and shut the door. And then the ones that were, you'd go and get, but now you have to go down there and you, while they're fighting, you have to figure out how to stop them from fighting and you have to go to a door and unlock every single door to get, so it's, it's a management nightmare.
And the speakers are, I mean, there's no way for them to identify people that are out of sight because the camera doesn't work anymore.
Yeah.
And it's a nightmare, it's, uh, I've been around jails a lot too, just like, uh, and it's, boy, it's nothing but a big disaster and a liability issue waiting.
Yeah, the exteriors of all those facilities are not secured, there's no fences around anything. And so like a couple of weeks ago, they had some guy from, a member of Hoover Crips come and knocking on the back door, you know, screaming because one of his friends or buddies were in there and they can't see that anymore because they can't be like, now let's switch to camera three, no, they're stuck with camera one, right there.
It's pointing over here.
And so then they go up and they see, you know, some dude that's not there to, you know, be nice, he's there to raise hell and.
I think Red did a good, uh, he, he gave a good example about the relationship that they develop with their folks that are brought in, so some of these kids are repeaters, you know.
The local offenders, they have relationships with, because some, they've kind of raised some of them.
Yeah.
But then they get, uh, offenders that come from out of the community and they're a little rougher, they're a little tougher and they're, you know.
They don't hesitate if they wanted to assault somebody, like a hometown person, like, so, it's just, it's a, it's a problem.
And especially if we're trying to talk to Grace Harbor about taking in some of their incarcerated youth and handling them, if we've got those issues there, it's not gonna make things better.
Facilities is really doing all they can do to help.
Well, maybe Grace Harbor can help us pay for it, right, because I'm just, it goes.
It's pretty steep.
If those outdoor, yeah, if those outdoor cameras were gonna cost us, you know, two million dollars, like, i- inside, it's just gonna, I'm just wondering how we're gonna be able to pay for that. Um, and, you know, what's going to be the estimate for that? Um, it, it's, you know, it's gonna put us in a very tight situation.
Yeah, as far as like facilities design and stuff, I think it, it also is a lesson to be learned about having like completely centralized systems. Uh, the fact that the lights don't work anymore because this computer software is defunct, that's weird and kind of stupid, you know, I, and when did we do it? We did it like ten years, twenty years ago? And maybe twenty years ago, we were like, oh, cool, computers, we trust them, but, you know, there's, you know, there's ways that you can build and design things with, you know, I, I guess, some more traditional technologies that make it to where your lights are always gonna be able to be turned on and off without computer software.
Or some kind of backup plan.
Yeah, well, yeah, you'd think backups would be a good idea.
I think.
Anyway, we'll, we'll get some ring camera.
Uh, I took a, I took a tour of inner-city transit, uh, that was, I was, that place is, I wanna work there. The building's incredible, uh, and the culture there, I, I commend the, the director on the culture that they have built there as a workplace. Uh, if it's all it appears to be, it looks like a great place to work. Um, I, I wanted to talk more about services specifically to district, to my district and then kind of where they see things going in the future and where, uh, you know, where they intersect with rural transit, which is, we have, currently have, our, our only bus services in the four, in District Four are run by a company called, it's a nonprofit called Rural Transit, I'm sure you all know this, Rural Transit that is actually run by TRPC and TRPC's not in the, the bus business. So I wanted to have a bigger talk about that and, uh, Mayor Sullivan was there and, uh, and, yeah, it's, it, she's actually on TRPC and on IT and so she's a great place, person to have that talk with, so that'll be ongoing. Attended the Rochester Grand Mound Chamber meeting, I had a great time, uh, with Jenica and Ashley and Kevin all attended along with Matt and I and I kind of gave a talk about what the county's working on and what we've been, you know, what we're working on, what we're working on in the future that's gonna affect them. And then, uh, each of the three staff members talked about what their role is in the county and then we just did kind of a open session, open forum for talk, for questions and answers and it was a lot of fun. I thought it went very well and then I met with Chris Dolman earlier this week and, uh, talked to him about his, uh, his docket item.
Did you say Kevin? Who's Kevin?
Kevin Jensen, he's, uh, new to CPED and he is, uh, I forget his exact title, but it's a, he does like ag, ag liaison.
Took over Ashley's job.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That sounds like a lot.
I was busy, Kevin and Matt keeps me busy, I don't, did I miss anything?
Probably.
Uh, but Kevin's official title is Agricultural Community Program Manager, there you go.
Alright, very good.
Other items, I've got one or, but I wish to.
For class, yeah.
Commissioner class.
Yeah, um, well, I thought I was gonna have a different update, but my phone just went off and I have a pretty good update regarding the Desmond camp. Um, what I was gonna say is they got their seventy-two-hour trespass notice on Friday and would be removed today. Um, however, there was a case filed in federal court in Tacoma, um, that just finished and the court granted a two-week extension, so I'm super happy about that, um. In two weeks, basically all parties involved should be talking over this next two-week period and if there is no agreement at the end of the two-week period, they'll be back in court, so it sounds like the process has been delayed, um, I'm happy with that. I'll probably figure out more details after we're done and I can make some phone calls and celebrate with the people who have been working so hard on this. Um, I know a couple of people have been providing outreach on a daily basis, so I've been doing what I can to support them and, um, this is a big win, so I'm excited. And other than that, I, um, attended the planning commission meeting last week. Um, Colin Bartlett was appointed to District Five and, um, it was really cool to see his introduction. He's interested in how, um, decisions around planning can affect vulnerable communities, particularly mentioned the, um, houseless community, so I'm really excited, um, about Colin's appointment on the planning commission and seeing where that goes. Um, we also, at the planning commission meeting, they were talking a lot about outreach and how to get the community more engaged with land use issues. Um, it's not an area, I mean, some of the bigger issues we get a lot of public comment on, but there are a lot of details when it comes to what the planning commission does and what the county's doing and a lot of people don't feel like they're informed, so. Um, there was some discussion around that, which I thought was a really good conversation. Um, I also went to the Orca Building, um, there is an Orca meeting this week, but we'll be in a session, a work session here, so I'll send Tracy to the Orca meeting, but I was able to kind of meet them last week, meet with the staff and walk around their building and learn more about what they do, so that was really interesting. Um, I also walked around down in the CPED area with, um, Josh Cummings and got to meet a bunch of CPED staff and that was really cool. Um, morale seems great over there and it, it seems like a really efficient team, so I was pleased to have the chance to meet with them. Um, I think that that is about it for me, um. I did have actually some constituent meetings on Friday, but I mentioned those already this morning, um, regarding mostly docket items, bar holdings, swap and, um, Beaver Creek rezon, so that was what I worked on last week.
On, in terms of, this is only one example, but the North Point proposal to rezone at Rocky Prairie, public comment was like somewhere in the neighborhood of seven thousand. Public comments, so that's, it was a purely land use issue, so public does engage when
Yeah.
there are certain things that get out there and you get, the airport is another great example, I mean, those two might be the two most publicly commented on issues in my tenure on the board.
I'm sure we got more.
Out, Rocky Prairie.
Jeez.
Yeah, um, Rocky Prairie was the most by far, but, you know, you, more than home fund, more. more than home fund, more than anything that we've done that you might, you know, think was, would have more, um, community interest, so land use can kinda reach that high level, but there are smaller projects maybe that don't get as much attention. So it's always good, yeah, to figure out how to improve outreach. That's great. What did the planning commission, um, besides introducing the new commissioner, what were they, did they have any particular item they were talking about?
Well, I think I took more notes at that meeting than any other meeting ever. Um, so there were a lot of things they talked about that were really interesting. Um, let's see. I mean, my notes, I think that they're great in the moment when I'm taking them and then I go back and read them. Sometimes I don't even know what I'm trying to say. Um, they talked a lot about the UGA swaps, which was helpful for me. I didn't, um, really even, it wasn't on my radar fully that I had meetings with constituents about that exact issue, like a couple of, I, I think the next day. I can't remember which day planning commission was on, but, um, yeah, so it was really helpful in my, going into my meetings with, um, folks who were concerned about that. Um, they also talked about high, high water areas and what to do about some of those areas, um, this year when things come up on the docket. Um, that was pretty interesting and good to know. They talked a little bit about the Niskali Subarea Plan, um, coming up this year. And we talked a little bit about, um, like joint plans and how we can get more regional collaboration when we're talking about joint plans. Um, talked about lack of resources in some areas and Thurston twenty forty-five was a pretty big conversation. Um, and so they talked about resources and how they, you know, how they relate to Thurston twenty forty-five and maybe some educational campaigns. They were talking a lot about getting the word out and I think that's kinda when the conversation led into community involvement and outreach was in terms of thon, uh, Thurston twenty forty-five.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they talked about a lot.
Have you met with the, um, I think I'm supposed to be meeting with the folks that are, live right underneath the Bar Holdings proposed project site? Have you met with those people?
I met with them on Friday.
Okay.
And I.
I heard an email from, what was the meeting from next, next week I mean?
Yeah, I thought they had some really interesting stuff to share. Um, they've been following this area for a long time. Um, when the UGA was changed and then I think it was changed back.
Yep.
Um, they were really involved with that whole process and care a lot about the issue. They had a, a lot of, um, like they had the WAC printed out and they went through it and highlighted parts that they think are relevant to this current issue on the docket. Um, so I thought they had a lot of good info.
Okay, yeah, one of the people you met, I had met at a political event related to trees and stuff, so I, I was just real curious what they had to say. Okay, well, that's a lot as well. Um, Commissioner Mihia, did you have anything further?
Not at this time. I'll make my committee reports when I get back.
Okay. Sounds good. And then tomorrow, are you, um, are you missing tomorrow's stuff because you're still traveling or?
Yeah, uh, tomorrow I will try to attend as much as possible, but, um, I've been assigned, um, to go to, um, to go to, um, for meetings with, uh, Walk Back, uh, with our Congress people.
Alright. Which one am I on?
I have, uh, I definitely.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so this is, uh, regarding communication with Department of Natural Resources. Um, I had a brief conversation today with Sarah Ogden. The person they designated, um, in response to our letter. And she is proposing a series of meetings, um, between, uh, DNR and commissioners. She has suggested starting them in March and we'll look for a date. And, um, with the first meeting, um, being DNR listening to what the county's goals are. Um, and then, uh, subsequent meetings potentially talking about ways that the county can achieve our goals and assisting us with coming up with a plan on how to get there. Um, and I said that that sounded great. Uh, we talked about how you're not interested in someone coming and just talking at the board, that that is not working for us and she acknowledged that. Um, and the people she'd like to invite into the room are their Puget Sound, South Puget Sound Regional Manager. His name is Don Milton, their Assistant Manager Brandon Mueller. And the Recreation and Conservation guy, she said, is, his name's Doug Kennedy. Uh, she's sure that Dwayne, uh, Emmons would like to join as well. Um, but she's particularly interested in connecting you to the local management team uh, and working with the county on where we go from here. So if that sounds good, we'll set up the first meeting and then I'd be interested in hearing from commissioners about what else do you want out of those meetings that we can convey to them.
How, how does the, the litigation
So we, we can't talk about Summit Lake at this time.
Summit Lake, but didn't we?
Summit, Summit Lake is the.
That one I know, but then the.
And have we joined one?
Carrot top, discussion.
And that would probably be off the table as well. Anything we're in litigation, we can discuss.
It's fine not to talk about that parcel, as long as we can talk about the issues generally that
Yeah.
bear on that same parcel.
That's right.
And that's what I was concerned about, about too close to the.
Yep. She said, she had suggested that we start with, you know, making sure that you all understand reconvenance and land trust transfer. I said, they already know that. You, you don't need to.
There may be things from their perspective.
I, I think before, uh, at least we oughta uh, ask our council, you know, that's engaged in this about, is this gonna be okay? Travis ought to. Yeah, no, we're, we're even talking about this. He should.
The way that they understand reconvenance is definitely different than the way that, you know, like, we understand reconvenance, so it would be, maybe, you know, they don't need to preach at us, but their, their, you know, their point of view would be good for us all to hear, whether they're on the money or off the money, I don't know.
I think in a conversation that would be great. The way they've come in the past is.
I have no, I have no knowledge of any of that. I'm a blank slate.
Okay, thank you.
The, those sales were slated for the twenty-sixth of this month, right?
The DNR voted not to.
Oh, they, oh, yeah, that's right.
They delayed till the fall for us to come up with some.
Not for all of them though.
Just cabbage patch.
Okay.
Carrot is now in litigation.
Okay.
The next ones are up in, according to the paperwork you gave me, the next ones would be up for auction in July.
Okay.
So.
So we'll get this going. And I'll make sure Travis is involved.
Do we know when Elizabeth's last day is and Travis becomes our counsel?
Uh, my understanding is that while she's on the books till the end of this month, she's actually leaving at the end of this week.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Travis is on vacation.
In what?
Travis is out till the end of next.
Okay.
Okay, um, my issue is about the issue of the Maple Court and the code of conduct issue, but there's a presentation tomorrow at Innovative Justice from the guy that's running Maple Court. I kinda wanna, before I bring anything back to the board, I'd like to ha- have that conversation, ask him some questions and see from the horse's mouth, because everything else I've been hearing is kinda hearsay. Um, so I'll bring this back.
Are you going to that presentation?
Yeah, I always attend Innovative Justice meetings, so, you know, they're once a month at eight o'clock before Tuesday, second, first Tuesday or second Tuesday, so I'll be there anyway.
Awesome.
And I'll just see what I learn and then I, we can have a discussion about it later.
That's great.
Okay, anything else, board?
Oh, I have one quick thing, speaking of Maple Court. I have a hundred and fifty of those Thurston County Resource Guide booklets and I'm gonna be dropping those off this week, so they have some, they, the resource list that they had was, no, I wouldn't even say bare bones, it was really lacking a lot of information. It was just like names and numbers with no explanation really of like what those names, who they were in. So I was like, we have really awesome county booklets and I'll drop some off, so gonna do that this week.
So their staff, like counselors or program managers or social workers or whatever, were going off some antiquated, non-existent list and?
I would say yes, that, that is one way to frame it. From, from my perspective, it was like Lehigh didn't provide their staff with anything or connect with the county to get anything, so the staff did you know, what they could do and went out and sought out these resources and they put it together on their own. Um, which is, you know, they were trying, but like.
That's a red flag for a system.
I agree.
You know?
And I agree, and that's a big concern of mine. I mean, I was thinking of engaging in more conversations with, um, maybe like the, the person, Prince, I think is his name, who leads Maple Court or manages Maple Court. Um, or someone from Lehigh. I'm trying to kinda bridge some of these gaps because housing programs are so important. Everyone here knows how important they are to me and there have been some really valid concerns raised about Maple Court over these last couple of weeks, but it's still a great resource if we can use it the right way. So I'm trying to connect them with all the resources in the county.
Is, is it just, is it okay for us to dip down into ranks of organizations like that as commissioners?
It's a good question.
You know, like, I would be cautious.
Yeah.
You know, you know, it'd be like going into the sheriff's department, like, let me sit down with your deputies.
Well, that's how much the office, so it's different, but.
But, but it's, it's similar.
No, I agree, and I have the Maple Court contract literally sitting right here and I've been making my way through it and you, you ask a really good question because through the meetings I've been having, I'm like, how engaged should I be with this topic or this group, like planning commission for example? I was thinking of all these ideas. I didn't say them because I'm a county commissioner, I'm just observing. But that's a great question, like, how involved should I get?
Generally, we're supposed to be like sixty thousand feet above the ground, looking at policy issues and then there's the staff, and I forget their name, like Tom and T- Keely would be the ones that you would, like, you know, and even engaging with them, you can't direct them, so you gotta be like, tread lightly with, I don't know, Robin, you probably give better advice than anybody on how to engage in that type of stuff, but you don't, you wouldn't wanna wade into Maple Court and be like, where it makes changes, you know?
Yeah, I think like, so for me, if I'm approaching any topic, I'm usually like, I'll ask Robin or, you know, and, or Rob and kinda go down the chain of command that way. It's kind of a unique situation when it comes to housing resources because I've also been a service provider for a very long time and I'm still doing outreach in the camps, so maybe that's something, like, I, I mean, are there concerns there? Should I?
I would, I would, I would advise caution about dipping into the ranks.
Yeah, so I mean, cause I have engaged with Elizabeth Petridge about conflict of interest stuff before I was even sworn in. Just to say, you know, hey, how, how engaged am I in certain top, certain areas, like, does the nonprofit that I'm a part of, um, ever apply for county funds and we, and they don't? Um, stuff like that, when it comes to funding stuff, it was like, let's make sure we stay away from county funds. When it comes to engaging with other service providers though, maybe that's a conversation I should have with the county attorney and let them know where I'm at with that, because I'm always happy to step back from nonprofit stuff if I have to. Um, and this is probably an area where I should be careful since we do hold the contract for Maple Court.
That's right. Would you suggest, I, well, to start, I believe that what Elizabeth's advice was, was, um, that you do not need to step out of your nonprofit, but you do need to be very clear when you're engaging, when you're engaging as a county commissioner and when you're not. Um, so, and that gets a little muddy when the county is involved in handing out money. You're making decisions on that.
And when I'm coming to the board to report out in situations like this meeting right now, if I did something on behalf of, oh, I'm just Emily Claus, an outreach person, and I gave these community guides to Maple Court and then I report it here in a commissioner setting, I mean, that's like kind of a great area too, so um, like, who would you suggest I talk to to get some clarity around that?
So probably would wanna sit down with Travis when he's back next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Like, those, those community guides, like, I, I took something home from those. And there's some places that I'd like to see him go and Matt and I have it on the whiteboard about a bigger discussion we wanna have with some program folks about how, you know, because me just handing them out isn't as impactful as me making sure they get, you know, indoctrinated into the, the way that that system works. You know, that's, I, you know, some of it's just a style thing, but like I, like me, like, I, because I come from the fire service, I'm really big on, you know, like, you know, staying in my own lane. I'm big on not dipping down in the ranks and like stepping over people, you know, you follow a chain of command and I, that's, so like, that's just my skin tingles when I hear people like going outside of those things. I'm like, oh, you're gonna get in so much trouble, whether it's true or not, some of it's just style and.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I mean, if it comes to staff stuff, I go through our county managers. When it comes to stuff like this, yeah, it does get a little bit unclear, but, yeah, I definitely wanna respect the ranks, so.
I think it's hard sometimes when there's an activity, especially when you've been engaged in it for a long time, but yet you will have conversations on a policy level as a commissioner. We have very much, there's a tremendous amount of overlap and even in that case, it, you gotta be very clear of what that bright line is between that activity and your policy discussion and work. It's just, sometimes it's easy just to have a clean break, right? But, uh, yeah, just being mindful of it is a good start.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, well, this is a little bit off topic, but I just, you know, these conversations are really valuable because when we, we work together as a board and I think we're working great together as a board and then, but I'm seeing that with five of us, like, there's, there's more incentive, I think, for community interests of whatever kind, you know, to try to divide and conquer us in a way, um, in hitting some of us, not hitting other ones of us and, you know, I, I'd like to see that, you know, minimized because I think it undercuts our ability to work together as a team for the, you know, so just, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, if I meet with a community group, I'm happy to share what, what it is there, you know. We can talk to each other about that, you know, offline too, but that's great, because, and it's not, it's not always nefarious, like, they may just not have the time, you know. They may just, they may call me because I'm the chair or they may call Wayne because that's their district, or they may call Emily because she's been involved in the issue, but, um, they might like to.
See my mustache and they're like, we wanna talk to that guy.
So, yeah, there could be all sorts of reasons why. They meet with one of us or two of us, um, but it helps that we all have the most information possible, um, as we go forward on stuff, because you know, some of these issues are, mean a lot of dollars to certain groups or mean a lot of, you know, mean, very passionate to some, you know, community interests, so.
Which raises a, a really good point relative, if there is an entity that the county has a contract with, um, and they are looking to meet individually with each one of the commissioners, then we need to be very aware of that and potentially not accept those meetings because we have run the risk of creating a serial meeting.
You wanna, you wanna expand on that a little bit?
Yeah.
Um, specifically, I know that there have been some requests, uh, to be, to meet with commissioners from representatives of Republic Services. And that, because we, the board just approved and that was negotiated and executed last year, there is a desire to renegotiate and the difficulty and probably the we wanna be very aware to not have a serial meeting or to negotiate in that setting. And so it probably would not be.
We can't negotiate individually as any, in any setting.
No, but even if they're, you're having the conversation and this individual's having them and then sort of working in the same issue through all commissioners, outside of a, of an appropriate setting, whether it's a public meeting or, um, an appropriate level to actually do negotiations. We just don't wanna open ourselves up for some, uh, concerns around OPNA, et cetera.
Yeah, so, maybe it just, can I expand on that just a little bit? For me. For me, I mean, the first thing I did was call down to talk to Jeff and Jennifer to see what's going on. Uh, I, you know, I was very adamant when we signed that contract that it was too good to be true. If you wanna review the tapes.
You're gonna have that on button that you just hit and there you.
And, and there's two contending bidders. And so if we start tinkering with opening up contract negotiations and we do not include the contending bidders, I don't know what kinda legal issues we run up against, but it might be more than perception, I would guess. And that's where I think Travis or whomever is representing that, maybe Rick was the one that was more involved in that, but.
Jennifer's meet, was meeting with them today.
Well, yeah, but Jennifer's one thing versus the commissioners, that's.
That's the appropriate level?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, is like, that was happening today.
Has anybody talked to Rick about this at all?
I, I don't, my assumption is that they have been.
I mean, I, I think we better be.
Legal counsel.
We better be darn careful. I, I was, I would, I didn't think this thing could possibly work a couple of years ago. Whenever we did this, I mean, it was too good to be true. Even the, uh, one of the opposition parties wrote a letter and basically said something similar to that. I don't know what it was, you better accept it quick before they withdraw their offer or something. So I'm just saying, I, I think we have to be cautious when we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in contracts. You know, it's a big deal and I don't wanna get sideways.
There's a whole bunch of issues connected to that that I agree with, but on your issue of the OPMA and the CO meeting, I could admit, I just wanna make sure from my own understanding, I mean, I can imagine a situation where a serial meeting was created if I were saying, well, this is what I think, tell Wayne there or something, but I mean, if a third party, like, we don't even know if a third party's.
You're being lobbied by an individual.
If they're telling the next person, like, we, a, a party that's not a board can, cannot get us in trouble for something we have no knowledge of, right? I mean, if they don't tell me what Wayne says.
What did Carolina say when you met with her? What did Wayne say when you met with her?
Right.
Unless that happens, but you're, you're just, you're getting into a dangerous water.
Okay, okay.
There's, yeah, there's also the issues of polling, um, of really saying, okay, having a conversation with you and, you know, would you reopen negotiations? I go to you and will you reopen negotiations? I go to you. So I, those all are potentially fraught with issues just because of the nature that you are the governing board.
Perilous, but that's not a.
Can I ask, can I go a little further on this and ask for more clarification, maybe on the polling, right? Because we see that with the docket all the time, when, you know, people who have items on their docket come to talk to kinda commissioners and relay their project, right? I, I, I mean, they don't necessarily say like, you know, they usually, you know, we're meeting with all commissioners, but, you know, kind of, like, so, I don't know, I just.
I appreciate that, Commissioner.
I'm seeing a lot of gray into the, but just.
Well, I think we're always trying to approach it from an abundance of caution. The, the difference really with docket items is there's the, there's a very robust public process that surrounds that. Um, you will have, even when something is on the docket and it's being worked, that is part of the legislative process, which is different than these other types of circumstances where you would be having the conversation away from the public eye. Um, so there is, there are common periods, there's opportunities to put something on or off the docket. Then there's the actual vetting of the proposal that goes through the planning commission to the, and ultimately to the board. Very, very robust. This is just one of those that, um, it has potentially fraught with issues.
Right. And Commissioner Mihia, you may recall how careful we had to be throughout the bidding and negotiation process for this particular contract.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Yeah. Who could, who could forget? I mean, it was, it was, yeah. And we had to be especially careful.
Okay. I was, are we adjourned? All right, but we're adjourned. Thank you guys, sir.
Thank you.